With me, I will introduce him shortly, at which point I believe, I guess, we'll make him a panelist so that he can present. But prior to doing so, I'll just introduce the case. Like I said, this is an administrative amendment to an application that was approved in 2017 for the construction of a three-story residential structure consisting of seven dwelling units. The application here before you is my client purchased the property with the approvals, proceeded to construct based upon the approvals and would now like to add a roof deck with a bulkhead for the occupants of the building to be able to utilize. As well as, he already did construct, I should say, the builder constructed a second-floor window that was not on the previously approved plans. So per the application, we'd like to amend to also permit that window to remain. So unless you have any questions of me, I'd like to present my architect, who is Mr. Jose Carballo. I can also share my screen, so I'm not sure if you'd prefer I do that and show the plans and exhibits, or I believe Lindsay might also consider doing that, or I can have my architect do it. So I'm open to whatever you suggest.
I don't know that I have a preference. I think that probably the easiest thing would be the expert, him or herself, should probably be managing it as they walk us through it. Otherwise, I think they'll be saying to either you or Lindsay in each instance, "Please go to the next slide. Please go to the next slide." So I think that might make the most sense. So I'm going to go to the attendee list. And I believe he's listed as Jose.
Correct.
Going to promote him to panelist.
Ben, before you begin, can you hear me, Ben?
Yes.
Before you begin, I'm assuming you agree to have your witnesses sworn in remotely?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
So I see Jose's name. I'm not sure if he's...
Yeah, I don't know what's going on. On another call before, I did have the icon on, so I do apologize for that.
So Jose, just a quick question before Ms. Lombardi swears you in and gets everything. Do you see a little video button by the bottom left-hand side of your screen?
There you go.
There he is.
There you go. Acknowledges.
Raise your right hand to be sworn. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please state and spell your full legal name for the record.
Jose Carballo, C-A-R-B-A-L-L-O.
C-A-R-B-A-L-L-O?
That is correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Jose, good to see you again. So the chairman has requested that... Are you able to share your screen? I'm happy and comfortable to do it if you're not.
I am not. I tried it before and I couldn't do it. So I'm a little, you know, just technically talented with this new computer that I just got, so I can't do it. I do apologize for that.
Okay, no problem.
Preliminary, I'll say that we... Jose, I presume your state licenses in New Jersey are up to date and we accept your qualifications as an expert?
My license is valid and I have appeared in front of you guys many, many times.
No, I just wanted to get that on the record.
I did pay for it, so it is valid.
Is that all it takes?
Ben, do you want to have this on your screen?
Sure. Sure. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to go ahead and share my screen and just confirm that everyone can see it before I start my direct testimony. So can everybody see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Could be looking at instead of the site plan previously submitted. Okay, great.
Ben, really quick, before you get into it, Bridgette, can we mark this?
Okay, this will be A1 for this application. If you could describe it for the record.
Sure. Just to clarify, this was submitted to the board as well. So I'm not sure if you'd like to mark it, by all means, but it is no different than the packages that you received. This is the three sheets of the amended site plan.
So are we marking that? Normally, we do not.
I don't believe...
Yes, please mark it, just in this instance, until we get all of this under control.
A1.
Sure. All right. So Jose, you've already gone through your educational background, but can you please confirm for me that you are familiar with the site, 66 Hutton Street? You have visited. You are familiar.
I am. I've been involved in this project from the beginning.
Did you design the initial site prior to being sold to our clients?
Yes, I did.
Okay, great. So Jose, since the couple of items for amendment here are related to the rooftop and the window, I'll just ask you to walk through the rooftop first. So if you can, I'm going to go over here and zoom in. Hopefully, everybody can see this. I've got the roof deck plan over here. So Jose, can you please walk us through what has changed since the prior approval?
Exactly. So the original approval did not have a rooftop. Basically, it just had a roof. And from the existing stair, which obviously is underneath the stair that is bobbled in the middle of the other building, we had a roof scuttle or a roof hatch that provided access to the roof. And that was only for servicing of the roof and the rooftop units that you see in the drawings. When this new client bought the project, he decided that he wanted to do a rooftop deck, which is something that is very desirable, especially in urban situations where, you know, there's very little outdoor space. So he decided to create a rooftop deck for his residence. So what we did is we extended the stairwell on the center. And that's the main stairwell in the building. As well, if you move to the right, yeah, that's the main stairwell in the building. So if you move to the other end of the building... And Ben, if you can slide it a little bit, there's a second stair which was put in as a second means of vigorous from the roof. So those three items, the two stairs and the roof deck are the only new items that are on the roof and the items that we're asking for an amendment for tonight.
Sure. And can you just confirm the dimensions of the bulkhead, which is located right over here?
Correct. So we maintain the one foot vertical to one foot one horizontal. So the height of the rooftop deck from the roof itself is eight feet. And we have eight foot eight from the edge of the parapet wall. So we set back fair enough. And if you look at the renderings that we provided, you really cannot see it from the street. It's just that far back.
Great. And can you also confirm, since the Jersey City ordinance does have specific regulations related to the mechanicals, can you please confirm that the mechanicals, the coverage has not been increased since the prior approval?
It has not been increased. As a matter of fact, the units are much more efficient. So I believe that the coverage on the roof, it's less now than it was when we first have this building approved. And as you can see, again, the same thing. The condensers are towards the center of the building with the parapet walls around it. You're not going to have visual contact with them from the street.
Perfect. All right. So I'm going to move along now to the second-floor window that is the second portion of our amended application, which is... I'm going to toggle here. So Bridgette, I can get you there when I open up. I do have an exhibit that will have to be marked. But before getting there, again, this is the same site plan, so same A1 that you've received. And Jose, if you can just describe the second-floor window for the benefit of the board.
Right. So the floor plan really hasn't changed. And basically, what happened is with the new buyer of this property, they wanted to put a window in the back, and that window was installed, which was not part of the original approval. And basically, again, it's just a window just providing more light and air to the bedroom.
Okay. So now I'm going to toggle over here to what we'll mark as Exhibit A2, if that's all right with everybody. And Jose, can you please describe as well what we're looking at over here?
Correct. So the window on the second floor, the one that's divided into four panes, the lower one, not the one up on top, that's the new window that was installed. It's a casement window, and again, it provides light and air to that there.
Okay. And as to the other windows that everyone's looking at, those were part of the prior approval?
Those were part of the prior approval, correct.
Okay, great. I have no further questions on direct with respect to this application.
Thank you. And Ben, is this your only witness?
Yes, I do actually have, I guess virtually, I do have the property owner somewhere on here as well. I do not intend to call him unless you have specific operational questions. But he is, I believe he's available, so I don't intend to call anybody else.
Okay, it's probably fine. Does anyone have any questions? Just remember, if you're muted, to unmute yourself. And this is limited right now to just the commissioners?
Yeah, Josh.
Yeah, Commissioner?
I wasn't sure. We still have the shared screen up there, correct?
Yes, you should be able to see it.
All right. I just have a simple question about the rooftop deck. Will that be greenery, or is it going to be like any kind of a water runoff system?
Yeah, the deck itself is wood. It's raised on piers. And the roof sheds itself, but there is not going to be any green on that roof. The only area that is accessible will be the rooftop deck, other than for servicing. And the rest of the roof is just roof.
So there'll be no greenery up there at all, the offsets of the water?
We have not planned for that, no.
I would like to point out that I believe those, again, there's no variances related to... And Commissioner, I do appreciate your question. There's no variances related to this application. And as to the prior approval, I believe that everything related to coverage was taken care of within that approval.
Okay, I was just curious to see if there was anything... Since it was changed to a rooftop deck, you know, it would be nice to see if there was some kind of greenery up there to absorb some sort of the water retention system.
We have not planned one at the moment, no.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question. What made the applicant put in a window and now go according to the plan that was approved the first time?
That was a requirement from the person purchasing the unit.
Just to clarify, it was, and I believe that, Jose, I'm not sure if you can speak so much to it, but I have spoken to my client about it. And this was, it was simply done in error. The individuals, my client did not do the construction himself. And the purchaser of that particular unit, the second-floor unit over there, had requested and spoken to the construction crew. And they went ahead and did it off of, without it being on the plans. The owner of the property itself, prior to the contract purchaser purchasing that unit, obviously, once they found out, that's why we're here requesting that. That was an oversight by the construction crew. And we are happy, and we figured it's better to request that amendment to the plans to make everything 100% kosher.
Okay. Any other questions from any of the commissioners?
Yes. Since it seems that the roof deck is really the primary change here, I'd like to get a better feel for the neighboring properties and, you know, whether they have roof decks or, you know, if this would interfere with their quiet enjoyment. I'm assuming the applicant has thought about that.
Sure. And I mean, Jose, maybe you can speak to how this roof deck is screened from the...
I'm sorry. Yeah, the rooftop deck has to have a parapet around it that's at least three and a half feet high. I mean, that's good, and that's for, you know, security of the occupants of the deck. Right in front of it, and to the side, you're fronting a new street. To the back itself, you, to the rear of, you know, where the deck is, the rear of the property, you have yards. And there really isn't a building that is probably less than 20 feet, maybe a little more, from the deck at that point. To the right, you do have other buildings. The buildings are lower. And those buildings do not have rooftop decks. Matter of fact, those buildings are, you know, they just have plain roofs, which should help in mitigating whatever kind of sound is generated by the occupants of the roof.
Sure. And then, Jose, I'll just jump, just to maybe preempt where the next question may have been going. But I'm going to jump to the elevation sheet over here. And just so that you can identify, or we can show the board, who I believe should have this packet, but identify the parapet of roughly three and a half feet is here, as well as the additional railing for the deck itself.
Right. So the three sixes taken from the roofline to the top of the parapet. Aside from that, you have the rooftop deck, which is about a foot high. And that's why we installed the extra railing, just to still maintain that three and a half-foot dimension.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. I have a question that's not related to the roof deck. How... I don't know how to... Let me go to viewing options. Maybe exit fullscreen. I'd like to see the other list to see if there's potential questions from the public.
Do I need to stop sharing my screen for you to do that?
You shouldn't have to. I don't know.
I don't think we need to see the shared screen any longer.
Okay. Then what I'll do is, okay...
I have a question. Commissioner Rothman here. So I gather from what we've heard so far, this is being developed as a condominium?
I believe that that is the intention, yes, to sell the units. I can't speak to all the units, but I do believe that that is the intention.
Okay. My question is, if you know, in the condominium documents, do they address at all any restriction about any short-term, any owner letting their building out for short-term rental, letting their units out for short-term rental?
I am not positive. I don't know. But that would, we'd have to ask the applicant, but I'm not sure of the status of that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Looking at, I don't know how to see if a... I'm looking at the attendee list, so seeing if there's anyone from the public. Please raise your hand if you would like to speak, if you have any questions or comments regarding this application.
Hold on. Do we want to, Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, do we want to ask specifically about the architect's testimony first?
We usually do all the questions at one time, so...
Understood, understood. And I'm sorry to jump in, but I did just communicate with the applicant. And I can confirm, Commissioner Rothman, that short-term rentals are not permitted.
So, I mean, I was anticipating that that was concluding your testimony.
Yes, yes.
Okay. So I'm trying to see... I can't tell that anyone seems to be raising their hand.
Yeah, I don't see anyone either.
So I'm going to presume that no one from the public has any questions or comments concerning this application?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, just so like, I just got a message across from Charles Height that remind him if they needed, you know, they could push the star nine.
Okay.
Oh, you can repeat that to the...
Someone did raise their hand. So Chris Murphy, I'm going to allow you to talk.
How's it testy, saying?
All right.
Sorry, guys. I'm just trying to test that out, everyone, to make sure you guys were getting through.
Okay.
That's good. Good idea.
Hey, thanks, Chris. Hope you're doing well. So I'm going to mute you and then return you to attendee. All right. I think Chris is...
Now he's off the screen.
Yep. Okay. So there are no questions or comments from the public. We're going to proceed to staff. Staff, do you have any comments concerning this administrative amendment?
No comments. Still waiting for the approval.
Lindsay, I'm having trouble hearing you. If you can, audio goes in and out.
Hey, under chat, I'm seeing from Hector Barrero to all panelists, "Hi, I have a question regarding zoning permits for construction."
Irrelevant.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's irrelevant too, but maybe it had something to do with this case. I don't know if you can hear that, Hector, but if you have a question, you can raise your hand and be acknowledged by the chair.
Okay. Let me see. I don't...
That was in the chat box.
Yeah, no, I see in the chat box. So Hector, I'm going to allow you to talk. But I would say you can, there's an option to raise your hand, as Kate just mentioned, so that I can see that you have a comment. So I'm going to say, "Allow to talk."
But Josh, I don't believe he's talking about this issue here.
I don't know. Hector, I see. Allow to talk.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, it's not on reference to what you guys were speaking about. And I'm sorry to interject on reference to that. It was just a general question regarding construction permits. It's a concern at the moment. Prior, I would say as a contractor, entering into a contract with a homeowner that currently lives in the property and moved, they relocated tenants, and they're due to be moved back within two months for us to do construction. And we submitted it twice, and they were, you know, it's non-essential. But it's, I understand it's not, it may not be essential for the city, but it's essential for the owners because they're obviously making money with the rents. And now they had to relocate a tenant to move them back.
Are we talking about 66?
No.
Oh, so, yeah, well...
Okay.
Hector!
We can't answer general legal questions.
Hector, the best thing you can do is to go on to the city's website and go under the construction code. I can send you the information in the chat, okay?
Glad it. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Hector. Hector, I'm now going to move you back.
Thank you. All right. So did we get the staff's comments here?
There were no comments, I believe.
No comments. But Bridgette, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, no comments. Staff recommends approval.
Okay. Does anyone want to make, does anyone want to discuss this first?
Can I just ask staff if the general conditions apply to this? And is there any way that somehow the greenery can be put up on the roof deck? A little bit of greenery or shrubbery?
That would be up to the applicant. We can't, there's no requirement for that. There's no coverage requirements for roof decks, the open roof decks.
Okay, thank you.
Does...
All right. I'd like to make a motion for approval on Z19-114.
Second.
Hey?
Commissioner Nuttner?
Yes.
Commissioner Valardo?
Yes.
Commissioner Jamie?
Yes.
Commissioner McCormick?
Yes.
Commissioner Rothman?
He's on mute.
Chad, I unmuted you.
Yes.
Vice Chair Donnelly?
Yes.
And Chairman Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries on in favor.
Thank you, everybody, for your time and for this certainly weird forum, but I appreciate it. The applicant appreciates it. And take care and just be safe, everybody.
Mr. Wine, may I say, you're a part of history. This is the first case approved of...
Does Jersey City...
...on that roof deck.
Does Jersey City offer keys to the city? I'm just asking for a friend.
Oh, they offer trees.
There you go. Greenery for the roof. Commissioner, stay healthy.
Hold on.
Roger.
Mr. Wine?
Yes.
Send me in an email the two exhibits that were marked A1 and A2 separately.
No problem. I'll do that as soon as I jump off this call.
Thank you.
All right. Take care, everybody. Be safe.
All right. Stay healthy, everybody. Take care.
Thank you.
Okay. So now we're going to proceed with case Z19-099, site plan amendment with D variance. The address is 75 Jordan Avenue. Is Mr. Pizzillo in the attendee list? I believe so. And I will promote him to panelist.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me. Can I have that case, the case number again, please?
Case Z19-099.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good evening, Mr. Pizzillo.
Hi, Commissioners. How are you? Can you see me, hear me, okay?
Yes, how are you?
Okay. Good. How are you guys?
But, Mr. Pizzillo, before you start, this is a notice case.
That's correct.
We have your notices. We have reviewed them. They're acceptable. And Bridgette, you have them as well, right? You can mark them as A1?
Okay, A1 in evidence.
That's question number one. Question number two is, since we're doing this virtually, will you agree to have your witnesses sworn in remotely?
Yes, Counselor, I have no problem with that.
Great, thank you. Okay. How many witnesses do you have?
I have two witnesses, an architect and a planner. And my thought is, just so to make it more efficient, I will just have them state their qualifications on the record as I pass the baton to them as they start, before they get into their substantive testimony, as opposed to, you know, me asking the qualification questions. Should I, you know, if we were appearing in real life?
All right. Well, if one of your witnesses is Charles Height, he appears before us regularly, so we don't need to hear his qualifications. We accept him as an...
Okay.
And who is your architect?
The architect is Eli Martin from LWDMR, who also appears before these boards regularly.
I don't recognize him, but let's see.
Okay.
You see him on the screen.
Okay, okay, fair enough. So, okay. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for your time. Thank you for Lindsay and planning and setting this up. I know it was difficult. And I appreciate all the hard work as we, you know, deal with this new normal, I guess, for lack of a better term. So my name is Gerard Pizzillo. I'm an attorney with Genova Burns. And I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, 75 Jordan Development LLC. They are the owners of 75 Jordan Avenue, which is also known as Block 12202, Lot 34 on the official tax map of the City of Jersey City. And we're here tonight requesting an amendment to the preliminary and final major site plan application that this board approved in 2016 under file number Z16-104. And at that time, the board approved the project consisting of a six-story structure with 35 dwelling units, parking, and a rooftop amenity space. Subsequent to that approval, two important things happened. The first thing that happened was the city amended the land development ordinance, specifically Section 34560, the supplemental... specifically Section 34560, the supplemental regulations, to allow for increased enclosed rooftop amenity spaces. The second thing that happened is my client, 75 Jordan Development LLC, purchased the property. And just going back, the property, Jordan Avenue, if you guys are familiar with it, is located, it's in the R1 zone, and it's situated right in between Zone 4 of the Journal Square redevelopment area, as well as the McGinley Square East redevelopment area. And those zones allow for, you know, increased and a high-density development. So we're kind of situated right in the middle of these areas that do allow for higher-density development projects. So once my clients took over the site, they looked at figuring out how to maximize the value for their tenants. This is a resident rental project. So based on what's going around, going on around them with these large-scale projects, what can they do to maximize, you know, the tenant amenity spaces, considering that, you know, they are, you know, stuck in between these higher-density permitted use areas. So with that said, and what the purpose of this site plan amendment is tonight, is to allow for a secure approval for an increased enclosed rooftop amenity space. That's the only portion of the project that we're changing. The remainder of the project, six stories, 35 dwelling units, will remain the same. I should note that, once my clients are developers, they're not, you know, you guys have seen enough applications where people get approvals, they don't necessarily build the projects, but my clients are builders. In fact, this project is currently under construction. What we're asking for tonight has not been constructed, do not worry, we're not, you know, building first and then asking for approval second. The rooftop that we're seeking, or the enclosed structure on the roof that we're asking for tonight, has not been constructed yet. So, as I said, the only portion of the project that we're changing is to add an increased rooftop enclosed amenity structure, and the programming of that rooftop space would be for a lounge area, you know, dining area, and allowing, you know, tenants to enjoy the view corridors, which they're pretty decent on the site. So, the section of the code that we're operating under is Section 34560G7. And what that says is that a rooftop amenity space, spaces with buildings that have elevator access to the roof, which this building does, are limited to 100 square feet, or 10% of the floor area of the roof, whichever is greater. So, the applicant, the applicant, what we're seeking is an 899-square-foot enclosed rooftop amenity structure. The maximum permitted, based on the portion of the code that I just read, would be 622 square feet. So, the reason for the D variance is section, the same section of the code, Section 34560G7-E, states that if the proposed enclosure is greater than 100 square feet, or 10% of the floor area of the roof, which in this case it is, that will trigger a D variance for an additional story. So at the end, should the board approve this, it would ultimately be a seven-story building with the enclosed rooftop. So, that's really the application before you that we're seeking your approval for tonight. As I stated, I have two witnesses, Eli Martin from LWDMR, who's our architect of record. He will walk you through the, he will walk you through what we're seeking and why we got to where we're getting. And then the second witness will be Charles Height from Dresner-Robin, who will walk you through the planning testimony. So if the Commissioners don't have any questions for me, I will turn it over to Eli, who can share his screen with the Commissioners and walk you through the architectural aspects of what we're teaching.
Great, Mr. Martin, we look forward to your testimony after you've been sworn in.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state and spell your full name for the record.
Yes, Eli Martin, E-L-I Martin, M-A-R-T-I-N.
Thank you.
All right, let me, I'm going to, can everybody hear me?
I can hear you. Mr. Pizzillo, did you want to very briefly go through Mr. Martin's qualifications?
I can do that for.
Okay.
Yeah. Yes, I am registered in New York and New Jersey, both my licenses are current. I attended Case Western Reserve University and Pratt Institute. I'm a founding member of the firm and have been practicing in Jersey City specifically for more than 30 years. Our office is located in the Powerhouse Arts District. I've appeared before many boards, not often this board, but the planning board very often.
And Eli, just, your license is up to date and current and in good standing?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
We accept your qualifications, thank you very much.
All right, I'm going to share my screen and see if this works. Can everybody see that?
No.
No.
There we go.
All right, hold on, I got to get the right file up here, give me one second. How about now?
We see it, but is that the right file?
We see the email, we see my email.
No, that's not, that's not it. All right, hold on. I have, you know, the problem is I have multiple screens. All right. How about now, let's see.
Look, yeah.
You got that?
Yes.
Yes.
Hold on. All right, sorry about that. I'm going to take you through the site and the project very quickly. As Mr. Pizzillo said, this application has to do with enlarging an enclosed rooftop amenity space. The site is here, it's in yellow, it's about a little under a quarter of an acre. And as Mr. Pizzillo said, the site is in red, you can see it's one-half block adjacent to Zone 4 of the Jersey City Journal Square Plan, and it's about another half-block from the McGinley Square Plan. So it's a little tiny sliver of R1 between two large redevelopment areas. Here's the site prior to demolition. It was actually an automotive repair facility. This is the site post-demolition. A large parking lot is St. Peters. This photograph was taken about two weeks ago, just prior to the stop of construction. You can see the sixth and last floor is just starting to be framed out. This is the rear view of the project. This is the site plan, and we have, you know, very quickly, a lobby, a mechanical space, and a rear yard, which provides 15 parking spaces and landscaping. Again, this is all part of the original approval, which includes seven dwelling units per floor, for a total of 35 dwelling units. Now, on the left, you'll see the approved rooftop plan. At the time, we were only permitted 100 square feet of amenity space. And so what you have there, can everybody see that, or you want me to enlarge that?
Can you enlarge it a little bit?
Sure.
Thank you.
How's that? Good, better? Okay, so, this is the bulkhead, the elevator and the stair, you can see you came up to a little vestibule, we had a toilet. That's all we had, and then we had a large exterior common roof area for the residents, and a little cooking area outside. That was the extent of it. What we're proposing is an 899-square-foot enclosed rooftop amenity space. It's going to have a little warming kitchen, it still has a bathroom and a vestibule, and it's intended as a way to create community in the building. It's a way to have an enclosed amenity space. As you know, new projects that are being constructed, amenity spaces have become more and more important to the vitality of a project. Residents are looking for that, and it really does help create a sense of community. So this is a flexible space, we'll have a screen and a sitting area for film and sporting events. We'll have movable tables and a communal table, and actually provides you access to the roof area. So there's some circulation that goes through here. Let me just reduce this for a minute. Okay. What you see here on the left is the approved, wait, let me, I think I went too far. On the left is the approved elevation, and on the right is the proposed elevation. You can see the rooftop amenity has a lot of glass on it, obviously. That's that piece right up here. None of the facade, none of the other elements of the building are changed, or as per the original approval. The only proposed change is on the rooftop. This is the rear of the building, again, on the left, the approval, on the right, the proposed. You can see the amenity space is a little larger now. This is the east, the side or east elevation, again, on the left is the existing, the approved, rather, on the right is proposed. Again, below here, you can see an enlarged elevation showing how the amenity space has ample glass, and it invites you out onto that roof terrace. And this is the last or the west elevation. This is the original approved rendering of the project, you can see the front facade, you can see the small bulkhead at the top, and this is what we're proposing. The bulkhead complies with the setback from the multiple lanyard ordinance for one foot, one inch for every height of the bulkhead. It exceeds that, it's further back. This is the other view, from the other side, the approved view. You can see it always had a very large outdoor roof area, and now it has an outdoor roof area and an enclosed interior rooftop. This is the approved rear of the building, and this is the proposed. And as Mr. Pizzillo said, we're looking for 899 square feet, which represents about 14 and a half percent of the roof area, as opposed to require 10%. All other areas of 345-60G are in compliance with the code. That's the end of my presentation, I can go back to any slide if anybody has any questions.
No, thank you very much, Mr. Martin. We're going to fold all questions until the end of the testimony.
Very good.
I was going to fast-forward, ask Mr. Pizzillo related questions to that. I'm happy to, I mean, Mr. Height is always a beacon of joy to have at the meeting. So I always look forward to his testimony, but I question the need for planners' testimony in this particular instance, when we're doing nothing to increase the height or density. All we're doing is adding communal space to the roof.
So, Chairman, and it's a good question, and the reason why we thought it was necessary for Charles to provide expert planning testimony is that section of the ordinance, little E, so it's 34560G7E. So anytime an enclosed rooftop amenity space exceeds 10% of the floor area of the roof, which in this case it does, it triggers a height variance, a D variance. So, that, you know, to support and to meet the necessary negative and positive criteria in order for this board to consider and grant our request, we brought Charles on to prepare a statement of principal points and ultimately provide the testimony for the board's benefit in order to, you know, to consider approving it. And that's the reason why he's here.
Great, okay. Mr. Height, you remain under oath?
It wasn't sworn in.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
Used to so many times being at the meeting.
Charles, my fault. I don't know how to see you, though. So I think that Bridget would need to see you, and you'd have to raise your right hand so you could be sworn in.
I'm here, if you can hear me, and my hand.
Now I can see you.
Once you start talking, the pictures change. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And state your full name for the record.
Hi, good evening, Charles Height, last name spelled H-E-Y-T, with the firm Dresner-Robin.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Height, we accept your qualifications as an expert?
Thank you, still, my license as a professional planner is still current, I actually just renewed it for the next two years, and it's in good standing.
Great.
So I guess I can take it from here. I think the board has a general understanding as to the marginal increase that we're requesting, and this change is solely related to the rooftop enclosed amenity space. The only things I did want to add, in addition to the architect's description and review of the project and the proposed changes, first and foremost, we comply with the maximum building enclosed amenity height, where a building of this nature is permitted to be 20 stories, we are under that threshold. We also comply with the setback from the front yard. In addition, we also do have a substantial setback from the rear facade of the six-story below, and it's very similar, almost approximately 15 feet in the rear. So, to that effect, this proposed amenity space is very much centrally located, and what that does is benefit from the street level. It's further screened by the principle of six-story structure. As we've mentioned, part of the other benefit is providing, from a planning standpoint, is providing additional amenity space for future residential tenants. Obviously, in the city, the parks are spread out few and far between, so for a tenant to have a very local residential amenity space throughout the whole year being enclosed, this is an added benefit to future tenants, of future residents of Jersey City. You find this almost as a requirement in many of the redevelopment plans, certainly in Journal Square to the north, and having rooftop amenity spaces such as this being permitted as of right. Either as it may, we are in the R1, we do need a DDI variance for building height, because this does eclipse that maximum square footage, so we are requesting formally a D6. The essential technical justification is, can the site accommodate the additional stories? The D6 was already granted for the six stories. The site is a used fence application that was previously approved, the site is particularly suitable. I do still find that, given the size of the property being greater than 10,000 square feet, and also the depth of the property, you have sufficient space for a rooftop area to accommodate this size of enclosed amenity space, particularly, it accommodates the setbacks and provides for a greater setback on the rooftop. In terms of consistent heights throughout the neighborhood, it's, as we've mentioned earlier, it's the one block, it's actually a portion of the block between R1, just south of Journal Square and just north of McGinley Square East redevelopment plans. To that effect, the property to the south is permitted to be a much larger height, it's a very large parking lot today. It's in Zone 2 of McGinley Square, and that would be permitted a minimum of 15 stories when that project gets developed. Other existing developments in the area that are very similar, mixed-use residential buildings, are relatively four stories. There's some on the north of this block, as well as. are relatively four stories. There's some on the north of this block as well as some across the street. And move further north into Journal Square, properties of this nature are permitted to be six stories as of right. And there are even several taller structures at the intersections of Academy, Academy and Summit, and then also Baldwin Avenue. So it's a, it's a relatively higher intense land use pattern with a lot of multifamily developments in the area, given those redevelopment zones. But to the extent that it's consistent with, with those, that level of development, I do, I do think it it is consistent. When you think about the negative impacts, any substantial detriment to the public welfare, again, this is a, a common rooftop area full, you need to be dressed in elevator. So there's no real safety issues when accessing it. It's screened and setback from the primary facade. So from the aesthetic standpoint, the visual impacts are reduced. And, and finally, that it shares the same consistent facade materials. So it doesn't stand out and it, and it certainly isn't an unfinished C and U block facade. So with respect to the impact to public welfare, I don't find that there's any substantial impact. With respect to the zone plan and zoning ordinance, we're in the R1. This certainly is a particularly suitable site for residential, for mixed-use residential project. And I think that was, was approved by this board in two thousand sixteen. I think that still holds true today. But what we're trying to achieve in this project is providing that additional recreational amenity space, which is a purpose of the last plan use, the Jersey City master plan. And it also helps provide for an establishment of appropriate densities, given that the site can accommodate additional recreation space on the rooftop. I do also think that it furthers a desirable visual environment, given that it blends with the existing architecture. That was really it. So I think I ran through most of my additional points. Be happy to answer any questions at the end.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Height, Mr. Martin. Where is? Got it. Mr. Pizzillo, I didn't see you. Sorry. I was gonna ask. Does that conclude your, your testimony?
That concludes the testimony, Chairman. We're open to any questions that the commissioners may have at this point.
Okay, thank you. Does, do any of the commissioners have any questions for any of the, either of the experts?
Just a clarification, Mr. Pizzola?
Yes, Commissioner.
All right, just a clarification. It's now going from a six story to a seven story, correct?
That's right. According, according to the ordinance, be- because we're exceeding the ten percent, it does trigger an additional story. The, but it's, it's a technicality in the sense that it's not a full story. It's just the roof, the enclosed space. There's no going to be, there's going to be no units. It's not going to be fully constructed. But because the ordinance states if you exceed the ten percent, then you, then it's, it's, it's added as an additional story, even though it's really not an additional full story.
We're not, we're not gonna go back and forth between a story and a floor.
Yes, yes, yes.
My only other thing is with the construction, I mean, it started, you know, like you said, back in two thousand sixteen, the initial approval for this all was.
Right.
Was there major problems in the delay to get it going? And now with the governor's orders of construction being halted, you're halted right now?
So, so I guess the first point is the approval happened in, you know, the approval was obtained in two thousand sixteen. The construction didn't start until my clients essentially took over the project when they closed on the property. But so it was, it hasn't been under construction for four years. Construct, it's been under construction a lot less. But as you are correct, because of the governor's executive order, the construction has ceased now until such time as, you know, the state of emergency is lifted. I, I hope that answers your questions.
No, it does. Thank you very much. I just wanted a clarification on points. Thank you.
Okay.
But, but Mr. Pizzillo, I, I think it's clear they're not, you're not building anything on the top level. So it, it's, it's essentially the same plan. I understand the technicality you're talking about. All you're doing is expanding the communal space on that top level, right?
That's correct. That's correct, Chairman. That's exactly right.
Okay.
Oh, go ahead.
No, no, Kate, you have a question?
No, but they're, but they're still increasing the height of the, the building, you know, it doesn't matter what you want to call it, but to me, it seems like this is sort of a last minute sneak. This is piling on. The building was big to begin with. It's in an R1 zone. You know, and I, in my view, this just seems like they're piling on. And so I, I wasn't that crazy about, I'll be honest, I wasn't that crazy about this application back in two thousand sixteen. I don't recall whether I voted on it or not, but I know I've seen this. And now it's worse. So I, I mean, if, if they really wanted that amenity space, well then, you know, put that in the top four if it's that important. I don't know, my two cents.
No, that's, that's a fair point. It, it is, it is a, you know, reach. It's certainly less of a reach than we've, we've seen in, in other amendments, which and I think that we've made that point before that this really isn't an amendment. You're, you're kinda doing a whole new plan. So I, I don't know. I think that there's a spectrum.
And, and they haven't really spoken to anything else that's positive that they're giving back to the community if, if we grant this. So can we get another tree or something?
Well, they wanna build community space. Maybe they should make the community space space for the community.
Yeah, they can make it accessible to the community. Yeah. Art shows, potluck dinners.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Phil, what do you think?
So I, I guess a, a few things. I, I don't think we're trying to sneak this past you guys. I think at the time when the initial approval was obtained, we didn't have the ability to make the amenity space this size. It's only after, you know, I think the, the, the code was last updated. This section of the code was updated in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. So it was really a couple of years after we got the approval that allowed us, or it even availed ourselves to even allow, to, to, to make this, to, to construct this thing. That's the first thing. The second thing, as, as I stated earlier, this is a rental project and we're just talking about access to the roof for those tenants. So I don't know how we can make this a community space. The point and, and the reasoning behind, and I think this goes to the positivity of what we're seeking is it's, it's a value, it's an enhanced value for the tenants. The, you know, as we, as everyone kind of indicated, this is situated in between, you know, two redevelopment areas governed by two redevelopment plans that allow for a high-density projects right around this surround, this surrounding property. So we're looking at it as a, a positive value to, to attract tenants and to keep tenants here. You know, based on the, the projects that are going around, you know, or getting built directly around it.
I, I don't know. I don't, I don't really understand that. It sounds to me like a relatively circular argument. I mean, I'm, I'm looking at Mr. Height's positive criteria right now.
Josh, I, I don't think the height of the building changed. Mr. Brazil, is that correct? The bulkhead was always that height. You just added on the bulkhead, correct?
Eli, I would like ask Eli to ask, answer that question from a, from a technical perspective.
Yeah, as, as Mr. Brazil said, the, the, the height is a zoning height. It's not an actual building height because we've always had a bulkhead on the top of the building. We've had an elevator, elevator and a stair bulkhead, two stair bulkheads. So we're not, you're not increasing the actual height of the building. We're just enlarging the bulkhead, if you will, to create an enclosed rooftop amenity. So if you see from this slide versus this slide, we're just adding on to the existing bulkhead.
Thank you. That, that's, that's what I was asking.
So for example, here you can see on the left proved bulkhead. And on the right, the increased bulkhead, if you will, which is actually the amenity space. The actual, the actual height of the building, you took a tape measure, has not changed.
Oh, yes, I, I completely.
I understood that.
Okay, just so everybody's clear on that.
Yes.
I have a question when I can.
Yes.
Okay, I, I completely agree with Vice Chair Donnelly's comments on this project. And I just want to kind of clarify my thinking. My, my thinking, from what I've heard, the reason that the applicant brings up the Journal Square area and the McGinnam Square area is because they could do a greater density building. We've heard this argument before, but this particular lot is not in either of those areas. And if you live on the border of Hoboken in Jersey City, you're either in, hopefully you're either in one city or the other. You can't pick and choose what rules you want to abide by if you're not even in the right stadium. And I'm not an attorney, but I have enough appreciation of the law that a lot of codes are about small details. And unfortunately, it seems they want to get, you know, add a, you know, a nice chunk, a couple of hundred square feet more, and that throws them into the, the legal issue of they're adding the story, not just an enclosed amenity space. And I'm, I'm gonna go with the, you know, I don't think I have the ability or the interest of redesigning already legislated redevelopment zones to accommodate the fact that maybe they're a hundred feet or a block or a block and a half. So, and again, as Mr. Donnelly said, they're not really, I don't, I didn't hear any real positive to the community or even the block from just wanting a little bit larger amenity space. So I'm not, I'm not real crazy about this particular variance. Request.
I mean, Mr. Phil, I, I leave this up to you and how you want to address this, but it sounds like maybe people are looking for a response from Mr. Height. And, and I, I would say I don't see a lot of depth in, in the write-up, in the positive criteria to address how the, the benefit of the space for the community.
Mr. Chairman, this is Eli Martin. Can I make a point?
Sure.
Can everybody see the screen?
Yes.
Okay. You see this area I'm highlighting with my mouse?
Yes.
Yes.
That represents if you took that area away, everything else would be as of right. Ten percent. Okay? So if we took this away, what's left is six hundred and twenty-two square feet approximately, which is as of right in accordance with the code for rooftop amenity space. That would mean the view from the street would be exactly the same. It wouldn't change because because our our plan, let me get to that quickly. This is allowed. This, this, this facade, this enlarged bulkhead is permitted. It's set back one foot, one inch for every foot of height. The height of the bulkhead is less than twenty feet. It's fourteen feet, eight inches. It's permitted. The only thing that changes is the rear view. Here's the proposed, here's the approved rear view and here is the proposed rear view. That's where the increase is back here. But on the front, that, this area right here is permitted. So really the impact to the public or on the street is so minimal. It, it, it's, it's really de minimis. Just wanna make that point.
Charles, Charles, do you want to add to, to the Chairman's question regarding the positivity and the positive criteria?
Yeah, I, I think in, in realizing that this is really compliant in terms of locating and enclosed amenity space, the intent here is to provide for a, a year-long amenity space for future residents. I know it's just particular to these residents, but on the large scale, if projects throughout the city will be developed, whether it's a six-story multifamily or a two-story two-family, if they do have rooftop decks, it does provide additional recreational passive amenities space throughout the city. So as projects go through that redevelopment cycle, additions get put on, they are entitled to a rooftop amenity and also an enclosed space. Just to Eli's point, and we made this earlier, it's centrally located. This could be constructed, six hundred and twenty-two square feet of an enclosed space could be constructed here. We're just providing a little bit larger of a layout. On the plans, you see some of the, the programming there. So you can kind of get a feel as to what type of space it will be. But again, six hundred and twenty-two square feet could be approved as of right and it would just be an amendment to the plans. It's really just that additional three hundred square feet in the rear that we're requesting. So I think from, from benefit.
Two hundred and seventy-seven square feet.
Correct. Three hundred and seventy.
Two hundred and seventy-seven.
Two hundred and seventy-seven.
All right, I understood, Mr. Martin, Mr. Height. I, I think that, that addresses the, the questions that have been raised. Are there any other questions from the commissioners?
You said two hundred and seventy-seven extra square feet, correct?
That's correct, sir.
Yes, Matt. Okay. Chairman, if, if, if anyone else has a question or comment from the board, I'm gonna look to see if anyone from the public has any questions or comments. Public, if you're listening in and you have a question or comment, raise your hand. If you're unclear how to do that, I will also scroll through the comment area to see if someone has a comment. No one, not even as a test, no one wants to have a comment. That's fine. Okay, so.
Commissioner, I, I have a question.
Yes.
On God forbid, there was a fire in this building. I don't see a second way out to get off that rooftop. If this was to get approved, I only see the one stairway.
No, there's two. Stairway one, number one. And this is stairway number two.
Okay, so there is, is there a way from my understanding that this was a higher top to this, to the rooftop? So is there a way to get down from this besides the stairs going up into?
Yes, there's an elevator right here.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the height, again, the actual height of the building has not changed. People would be on this roof anyway, and it's, there were still always two stairs and an elevator. That has not changed.
Okay.
The only change is the increase in, in the amenity space.
No, I, I understand that.
Okay.
Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, my client is online and he's participating. He would just ask to, he would, he, he wants to address the board, just kind of as to some of the questions that were posed by the commissioners. So I would just ask if you can unmute him and allow him to speak.
I'm just looking, who is your, just?
Okay, it's Dee Hodera? Or I don't know if it's by phone numbers, Diego?
Diego.
Diego, yeah.
So Diego, I'm gonna make Diego a promote to panelist. Okay?
Okay.
And then Diego, I'm gonna, once you're, you're there, I'm gonna oh, back into our screen. Exit full screen.
You hear me?
Yes. Yes.
But you don't see me, right?
No, I don't see you.
What about now?
Yes, now we see you.
Thank you very much for.
Okay, raise your right hand to be sworn. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And state and spell your full legal name.
Diego Hodara. My name, first name, D. as David, I.E.G.O. My last name, Hodara, H.O.D. as David, A.R.A.
Okay, thank you.
And, and Mr. Hodara, I mean, I, I don't know, I don't care. Bridget, and I'm not sure, Diego, were you raising your left hand or your right hand when you were being sworn in?
I think it was the, the left one.
What?
My left, your right now.
So I will do it again?
Redo.
Up, Bridget, up to you. I just, it looked to me like.
Do you swear on the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I will. Thanks, Josh, for picking that up. I, I, I want to make, I want to answer some of the questions and concerns. First of all, I want to say I'm an architect by trade, no license, but I've been in construction and I've been designing throughout my professional life, and I do care about the, the issues that were raised here. First of all, we didn't sneak anything at the last minute. We brought this up before we broke the ground, and I sat down with different city officials and the community, and due to different delays, we ended up presenting this later on. It was also about cost, whether, how much cost would be in, because we had the contractor. So it was not an intention to bring this up to the last minute. We didn't even build this yet, so that's the first thing I wanted to mention. Unfortunately, we are later on the process, and we will do whatever the board approves, of course. It is what it is. But the intention of this is not to gain the system. We have eight projects in Jersey City. We are not flipping projects. In fact, I bought it from a flipper who got all these approvals and then sold it for a big, big amount of money, and we are the ones taking the risk, bringing work into the community. We are, we, we are putting the risk into, and it's not about gaining a little more square feet or 200 and change square feet. We are satisfied with the project as it is, but we think about the community. And I will answer another concern from the board related to the community only for the, for the tenants. I disagree. I really disagree because we have 35 units here, and they are not isolated from the rest of the neighborhood. We intend to create community beyond the building, and that's the people on the streets. The, the, the neighbors become part of the community. And I'm sure you, I assure you that many of these tenants on 4 of July will invite their neighbors into the building to enjoy the fireworks and, and, and any other events or a Super Bowl during the winter time in that enclosure place. So yes, I do think the community beyond the, the building will benefit from this extension, minimum extension of the bulkhead to provide a whole year space so that the community can enjoy something. So these are my two cents of this, and I hope the board consider beyond this and not an economical interest. We are, we are, that's not our approach. If you start searching about me, you will see I am not that type of developer. We intend to do and add value in the community. We are very active in many other associations, and we hope to continue doing so in Jersey City. That's all. Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much. Diego, I love the enthusiasm for the project and the community. How about, I don't know if it exists already, but we could start the Jordan Avenue Community Group, and their headquarters could be the roof deck.
No problem.
Everyone, everyone who's a resident is, is automatically invited. If they live on the street.
You know, you, you know, the safety and security issues could be an issue, but I do believe that the way we are intending in other buildings and all of the other buildings, we are meeting code, we are meeting in terms of the enclosed rooftops. And we, we think there will be, organically, there will be there will be this community extended to the neighborhood organically without having to be set on a rule. And again, we, we, we are planning to put more green. I think we, we could, there was a comment about trees. I'm all for it. I think it's, it's about given and take, and this is only the intention to give. And if there is something else that the board considers appropriate, I'm happy to explore that. But it should be considered as a, an addition of value to the community, not only the building tenants.
Thank you. Does, does anyone have any questions? Matt?
Oh, no, just don't exceed now. Now you want to invite people up that don't exceed the capacity?
No, but, but just think about this. Think about one tenant being an artist or, or a tenant being a painter, whatever. This space could be used for their exposition of their work. So you, you, you have to think that we need to give the, the neighborhood opportunities of them promote themselves or whatever. These spaces should be considered for that. And you know, you know, there are other developers doing so. There are events open to public, and so we should, we should be active that way. I think I'm, I'm all for it, and, and you should count on me, whatever. In the future, all the buildings that we will be accomplishing, we just finished 65 New Kirk, another building. It has some enclosed space, and it's within the zone four. And we hope to do exactly the same as we are talking here. Hope to do, invite people or the tenants be benefited on this enclosed space so that they can invite or expose the, whatever, artwork, whatever. That's an example.
Thank you. Really appreciate it. Does anyone have any other questions for Diego?
I'd just like to make a comment. You know, it seemed like good, good ideas and everything that he has, but, you know, we're not the police. We can't go out there enforcing the crowds and amount of people, just like they're having problems now with out in the streets with the virus and all. And, you know, the, the big parties and stuff like that. No, unfortunately, he's not going to have a July 4th party this year. So we're safe on that one. But, you know, I just think, you know, like, and all the other retrospects to what Mr. Pizzolo and everybody has said, that, you know, everybody, Josh, you agree, we hear this all the time, that, oh, we, if we were like a senior building, we could go eight stories, or if we were a, a school, we could go this amount. We're in, though, so close to the zones, like Commissioner Rothman said, you know, Zone 1, Zone 4, Zone Chris, Journal Square redevelopment, McGinley Square redevelopment, there's even Jackson Avenue redevelopment there. So we've had this before. I'm just a little annoyed of all these, you know, cases being brought up, and they mentioned all these different, you know, we're so close to this, we're so close to this. I agree with Commissioner Rothman that, you know, let's stop hearing about how close we are to all this other stuff and worry what you're trying to get through to the commissioners now.
Makes a lot of sense. Thank, thank you, Rich. Does, does anyone have any questions for Diego? If not, we can.
I would, I would just like to restate the issue. As the applicants proxy said, they could do 622 square feet as of right, not be here. So the 277 square feet additional must mean very much to the developer to engage a lawyer, a planner, and an attorney to come, use the developer's money to make this, to make the case. The architect's case is, and the Mr. Height's case is, we're not really changing the height from the bulkhead, which is allowed. We're just kind of stretching it a little, but the problem is stretching it past 622 makes it a variance case, not an as-of-right case. And again, going back to our mission, positives and negatives, there's no incremental positive that I heard to go from 622 to a variance case. There's no, I didn't hear anything about a affordable unit, a workforce unit, anything like that. I, I just don't see that there's any compelling reason put up by the applicant's representatives to justify this other than, well, you know, it's another, you know, there's a reason, maybe a good reason, maybe a bad reason, not for me to judge. There's a reason that they write these statutes, these, and they write these definitions, 10% over 100 square feet. And you exceed the 10%, and you're here instead of not being here. And I think that there really is a, our mission is to balance positives and negatives. And I don't see any, I didn't hear any incremental positives to expand this from an as-of-right 622 square feet to a variance case. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Chet. I mean, I think that everyone has made some very good points. And I, I don't know that we're going to get more pushing the applicant on this, so I, I think it's a good segue to staff, and we'll pose all of the challenging questions to Lindsay.
So I did prepare a short staff report dated April 21st, which you all received. Just to go back, I didn't hear that the plans were marked, the evidence. You can mark those as A2, and my staff report as A3. All right, so, you know, not to repeat too much of what has already been said. The applicant is seeking approval of a site plan amendment with a D. variance for height. The D. variance is required since the proposed square footage of the enclosed rooftop amenity space is over the permitted size in square feet. So that's why it's counted as a story. And it's now considered seven stories rather than the previously approved six stories. However, the height of the enclosed amenity space is conforming and is set back from the primary facade, 13 feet, over 13 feet, thus mitigating impacts on the streetscape and the neighborhood as a whole. Therefore, it's the opinion of staff that the proposed height does not degrade the appearance of the neighborhood. And if this is to be approved, I had a number of conditions, standard condition in my staff report. I'll read them if someone requests, but otherwise, since they're marked, I think that covers that. And that's all.
Mr. Chairman?
Can I just have a point?
All right, hold, hold on a second. So Rich, what, what's your question?
Can we do away with the shared screen?
I will try to do that.
Yeah, or Eli can cancel.
I can stop sharing.
Yep.
Okay, great.
It's gone.
Yes. Was that, was that your only point?
Yeah, it was just on this, on the cell phone, it's a little bit distraction. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for staff? Okay, I mean, I, I guess I'll, I'll just say quickly, I, I think that I appreciate the points raised by Kate and Chet and Rich on, on, you know, this, this is a reach to ask for something. My, my viewpoint is it's not a significant reach. And you can weigh the, the benefit of that or not. I think that Charles' testimony on positive criteria, certainly, there, there's not a lot noted there. There's not a lot of benefit to the community, but I, I don't really think there's any negative at all. I think that if they built what, what they could build as of right, it would look virtually imperceptibly different from what they're proposing to build. And, and I guess we can, we can make a stand and be principled and, and reject it. I don't know the answer because I, I often feel like, well, it's only incremental. That's my feeling here. I, I feel that, that this is not something I'm going to stand on my principle on. I, I, even though I completely understand they could have said, we're building community space, and we'll make one space. As Chet said, live, work, or one space a affordable rental to do that. And, and if we want, I mean, the applicant is here. We can certainly make that type of presentation to see if they would accept it. I, I think there's, there's not a lot of ask here. So that's my viewpoint, but, but everyone's entitled to their own viewpoint.
Karen?
Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes.
I, my only suggestion just to, to tune in is that it's always good to tie your negative condition to the, to whatever, what the, the variance is actually increasing the intensity of. So to say like you want to do a work-live unit for a roof deck may not be kind of like apples and oranges. It's, that's actually an apples and oranges. You might want to have something that if you are looking to, I think, get closer to you feeling okay about the roof deck, there are other suggestions to look at, maybe back to, hard getting back to what Commissioner McCormick said within the first application. You know, there's ways to retain water on roofs, and if that makes you feel better because he's got more space. For example, when we've looked at ordinances on roof decks, we've allowed larger roof decks when people have done green roofs. Extensive green roofs where nobody can get on plates. Those are things to consider, and I don't know if the applicant is even willing to do it, and I'm throwing this out at the last minute. But my only kind of two cents and suggestions is that trying to make them connect, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Exactly, Tanya. That's a lot more thoughtful than, than, I, I wanted to, to articulate what you were saying. Something should be commensurate with what we're looking at.
The, the other thing to just keep in mind is that, you know, yes, it's not much different in looks from the as-of-right. However, the, that's your as-of-right when you've already gotten a variance to build a six-story building. And so that's what I meant about the piling on piece. And I, I agree with the whole negative criteria analysis, but I'm, I don't know how else to beg you to throw us a bone on this. Like plant a couple trees, do a little something nice, but you've already gotten a pretty significant variance without pushing the envelope much. Can't you give us a, a little something other than saying like, oh, yeah, maybe, maybe we'll have an art show up there sometime, something that we could never enforce? Something that you can put on a plan and approve?
Mr. Pizzolo?
Probably have the votes for the approval of this because, you know, so it doesn't matter that much, but I'd like you to throw us a bone.
Mr. Pizzolo, if you want to coordinate between you and your.
We, we are, it's kind of like, it's the, tonight's the NFL draft. We have our little war room, you know, group chat going on, so we, we've been communicating outside of the, you know, outside of the video screen. So to that point and to Commissioner Donnelly's point, my client is willing to, you know, put a, a green roof around the mechanical area on the rooftop. So we can add green space to the roof. If that, you know, would, you know, satisfy, satisfy you guys. So we're more than happy to add green elements. You know, obviously, we would make that a part of the conditions of approval. We would revise the plans so that, you know, and work with Lindsay in planning to make sure that they're okay, you know, that she's okay with, you know, what we're doing. So we can, we can add the green roof. You know, look, and now i- in terms of community, you know, if, if there is a community organization that wants to utilize the space, I'm sure my client has no issue allowing the community, you know, access. You know, if they want to have a meeting, or as Commissioner Donnelly said, an art show. You know, so it would be an amenity for the tenants, but that doesn't. You know, so it would be an amenity for the tenants, but that doesn't necessarily mean we can't, you know, close it and have a, a, you know, a community function. So, you know, my client is definitely amenable to, to all those kinds of things.
Okay, should, should we, I mean, I don't know what other commissioners think. Lindsay, do you want us to put something into memorialization?
So if we're going to add that condition to add green roof space, are we comfortable leaving that open ended? Or do we want to define the square edge of our proposed green barrier, maybe to offset on the additional square footage of the enclosed amenity space or even more. So that would be around three hundred square feet. If we wanted more, I think there should be something specific on the record rather than leaving it open-ended.
I can tell you how large the area could be. It can be, it can, it could be the entire mechanical area, which is about two thousand square feet.
That sounds great. We're trading off two hundred and seventy-six square feet for two thousand square feet.
Yeah, but you have to realize mechanical equipment will be sitting on the roof. So it's not, we're not planting two thousand square feet of green.
I understand.
It will be in and around the mechanical area.
Josh, I liked the, personally, I liked Lindsay's, uh, equal for equal. So the three hundred square foot, I think is fair.
Okay.
That's my personal opinion, but.
But I, I don't know, Lucas. I mean, I feel like that's negotiating against ourselves. They, they started with two thousand and then we proposed, why don't we reduce that to two seventy-six? Why don't we start at two thousand that they initially proposed and see what they come back with?
On, on the revised signature set?
That was the architect, not the developer.
Can, can I talk?
Yeah, yeah, Diego, sure.
Okay. I am happy to create a green roof section in that area. I agree with Lindsay to set a, a, a square feet and the truth is so that it's functional. Because you have mechanical, so you have to service those mechanicals, those, uh, units. And so we need to create different areas where we actually do the green space. So by setting up a square feet and, uh, I, I think, look, we can go beyond three hundred. If you want to set up a five hundred, we can go even more than that. I don't think we will be, it will be feasible just for technicality that the, the person who serves the area of the, the split unit needs its own way and, and a path for that. And it has to be protected. Also, we need to protect the roof. So, but, but I think five hundred square feet in a, in a section there, we could definitely put a green, uh, green space.
Okay, commissioners, I mean, I, I don't want, I, Lindsay, I appreciate.
More, we can be doing more.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I think, so Lindsay, I appreciate that you want something specific put, put into this. I, I just feel like we don't know that right now and I'm, I'm inclined to, to recommend that we say to be determined and approved in coordination with staff. With the understanding that, that you would serve the city's best interests. What, what other commissioners think? Cause I don't know how we're going to determine this on the fly.
I, I, I think Lindsay's original recommendation was, was good where you, where you set a minimum. And then, but, but, but an instruction to work through it with staff.
I, I agree with Kate and Lindsay.
I, I, I think it should be minimal too, because to have greenery about around all your HVAC units and whatever, I, I don't know if I agree with that part. So I, I say minimal.
Okay.
I'm not really interested in this project, you know, extending it out this much anyway. I agree with Kate and her, what she said in the beginning, you know, getting this, you know, this seems like it was snuck in. You know? And, you know, that's pretty much where I stand with her.
Okay. So does anyone want to? I mean, Kate, are you good with making that recommendation to Lindsay? How it's going to be added?
Yeah. Well, how about, would you like me to make a, uh, how about I make a motion, see how it goes? I would like to make a motion to approve the applicant's application to amend the site plan with staff conditions, which will also include green roof enhancements of at least three hundred more square feet.
I second.
Okay.
Commissioner? Commissioner Velardo?
Yes.
Commissioner Jamie?
No.
Commissioner McCormick?
Yes.
Commissioner Rothman?
I'm going to buy in the green, additional green roof space as a positive aspect of this. But I will also say, I'm not very impressed with the trades. The little bit I've learned is trades really, although they slow the water runoff in heavy rain, they don't really do much more than a good. You know, normal system of roof runoff does, but I appreciate the effort of the applicant to come to some, at least throwing some benefit related to this project. So I'm going to vote yes.
Vice Chair Donnelly?
Uh, yes.
Chairman Jacobs?
Yes.
I was six, four, one against motion carries with conditions.
All right. Thank you for participating. Good luck on the project.
Thank you very much.
I wish everybody.
Thank you, commissioners. Be well.
Your effort tonight.
Yes.
Thank you. Bridget, do you have any follow-up for Mr. Bizilo?
Gerard, just do me a favor and send me separately the A one, two and three that we marked so I can physically mark them.
Okay, so A one, just, just A one is the notice, A two was Eli's plans and I'm not sure what A three was, or were the renderings on marked separately or?
Staff report, so.
Oh, the staff report, my apologies. Okay, so Eli's plans, renderings, A two, staff report, A three. Okay, okay. I'll send that to you this evening, Bridget.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
You be safe.
Okay, bye-bye.
So we're done except for memorializing resolutions? That sound right?
Yes.
Okay, so ready?
Yeah.
First resolution to memorialize is case Z eighteen dash zero nine seven. Applicant was Midtown Professional Center Condominium Association. That was an amended preliminary and final major site plan approval with C and D variance approval. The address was five fifty Newark Avenue. That was heard on February sixth. There were seven commissioners present that evening. Chairman Jacobs, Vice Chair Donnelly, Commissioners McCormick, Shadid, Velardo, Rothman and Netcher. All in favor of approving that?
Aye.
Aye.
The next three were heard on February twentieth. At February twentieth. Let's see who was present. There were seven commissioners present on the twentieth. Commissioner Donnelly was the acting chair. And the other commissioners were McCormick, Shadid, Rothman, Mitchell, Velardo and Jamie. So the first case to memorialize is case Z nineteen dash zero six one. Minor site plan with D and C variances. The applicant was Shaheb Khan. The address is nine thirty-seven Pavonia Avenue. That was approved. Seven in favor, none opposed. All in favor of approving that?
Aye.
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 The next one, uh, same date, same seven commissioners. Case Z nineteen dash zero, I'm sorry, Z nineteen dash one, one, one. Frank Peraza. Final major site plan amendment with a D variance that was on Gordier Avenue. Again, that was, uh, voted seven in favor, none opposed. All in favor of memorializing that?
Aye.
Aye.
And the next was, uh, Z nineteen dash one, zero, two. That was Walgreens at seven twenty-three Sea Quakers Road. That was for, uh, C variances to allow the replacement of an existing retail branding wall. I don't want to read the rest, but that was also on the, uh, the twentieth. That passed, uh, six in favor, uh, one abstained. I can't say, that was Commissioner Shadid, I think. All in favor of memorializing that?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
So that concludes it, at least for the resolutions. But I, I'm assuming that concludes the meeting, Josh. Is that so?
Yeah, I think so. Thank you all for participating. This went more smoothly than I thought it was going to go.
Commissioner Jacob?
Yeah.
I'd just like to say, you know, on the record, this was, uh, you know, first, I believe in the history and that the whole, all the board and the staff did an excellent job, you know, being part of history being made here today. You know, luckily we only had two cases, but we have to drive into it slowly. Um, and I respect everybody's, you know, good job and being here and hopefully everybody stays safe and healthy. And on the record, I just said to say that this is being recorded, so I would like to see the correction on my name being properly spelled. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Rich. Really appreciate your attendance as well in this historic, uh, meeting.
When is our next meeting? You say there's only one in May. When is that?
Right, um, Tanya, we said we were just going to have one May meeting, right?
Yep, on the normal.
Twenty-first.
Schedule, I think May eighth, is that what it was?
It's May.
Well, there's May seventh is the, the first Thursday. And May twenty-first is the, is the regu, is the second regularly scheduled meeting.
So it'll be, so it'll be Thursday, May twenty-first. The same things I sent out this time, the agenda, a link to all the plans, the data portal link on the agenda. And if anyone has any feedback about how everything went, if you want to reach out to us, it goes smooth, more smoothly.
Yeah, I mean, Lindsay, I mean, I, what are, what do you think? I mean, I'd be interested to know kind of what the perception. Obviously there's not a lot of public that, that was able to part, that, you know, know what was going on. But if, if we're able to do this smoothly, maybe we, I'd want to meet demand if people are willing to have their applications heard in this.
Excuse me, excuse me. Could you be quiet, please? Sorry.
Bridget, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay. I, I guess the only thing I was trying, going to say was, um, if, if people want to bring cases. I think we should be willing to hold meetings. And I don't know what the demand is going to be like or the hesitancy to have meetings in this forum, but I assume that the reluctance to have meetings in this forum will diminish potentially over time if this is going to be the new normal.
Well, I think we'd have to figure out how to deal with the public a little bit better. Because there wasn't much public tonight, but you know, if, if there's a, an application that's a little controversial and you have fifteen, twenty people want to speak.
Yeah.
Well, they're going to line up and I'm afraid to touch these little buttons on the, on the bottom here. So one says participants twenty-two. So who are the other people on the screen now? Who are the other ten? I only see.
Vinny, if you push that button, you could see the names of all the people that are on there.
I'm afraid to touch anything because I, I think.
Yeah, I know.
Morning, I, I had a Zoom with the tax court and I pressed something and I lost.
You disappeared, yeah.
But let me, so I can press this and then what happens? Oh.
And then you'll see, you'll see the names of all the people that are on, as participants, whatever.
If there is participants on right now, you want, might want to consider them not hearing this conversation.
Yeah, I think also, um, I just want to point out that a lot of, there were a lot more attendees in here earlier. I think at some point we were at twenty or so attendees and there were a lot of professionals who present to the boards. Kind of sitting in and watching how this all goes.
Yeah, I think we were up to the twenty-five at one point.
Yeah, I think like one gentleman stopped, that one gentleman that stepped in and wanted to ask the, you know, the crazy question about permits and all. You know, so a lot of these people just saw it and they figured this is like a good way of getting in there and not realizing what it was all about.
All right, I'm going to remove all of the attendees now.
And I just wanted to say that there is going to be a planning board meeting held virtually on this upcoming Tuesday and that has more substantial items on that agenda. If you guys want to tune in. All the information is on the city planning website. So if anyone's interested in seeing how a longer zoning board agenda might run, I think that would be a good thing to, to check out.
How do you think that's going to go?
I think it's going to go perfectly well.
I want to, I want to thank the staff for pulling this all together. In addition to doing their very professional job in, in the particular cases, I want to thank my fellow commissioners for, um, uh, doing well and we should definitely make a correction and get, uh, Mr. McCormick's name spelled correctly. I want to additionally thank Vinnie and Bridget for the work they've done remotely from wherever they might be. I see Vinnie's background has now disappeared and it's.
Yes, well, it's nighttime out there. Night falls in Hoboken. Wasn't that a novel? Josh's light tower is still on though.
I, I don't know how to remove my. I'll try to figure that out.
Hey, Rich.
Hey, Jack, it's very interesting procedure. I guess now we know why we never did get our parking passes. City Hall, they, they anticipated shoving us off and just stay at home and do it this way, but.
Excuse me, can I make a motion to close the meeting?
I know. It's Miller time. I make a motion to close the meeting.
All right. Hey, Rich.
Say aye.
Aye.
Hey, wait, hey, Rich, hey, Rich.
Off the record.